Just wondered why you voted no to that last thing, but that's okay.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the January 11, 2021 Meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Bell for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens of the city of Greenville, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the great glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever to, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yep. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover. And I will note that Mayor Protem Glover has let us know that she will not be attending tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell. Okay. Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No changes to the agenda this evening, Mayor.
All right. From council, I'd like to approve tonight's agenda.
Please approve.
Did we not need to make an edit to the consent agenda?
We'll do that at the, when we get to the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
That's five zero in approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or potentially the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during this day shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who had registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers tonight for the public comment period, and I am going to look really quickly in our public input inbox.
Okay.
And Mayor Connolly, it appears we have no comments in the public input inbox.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda are the following items: A resolution accepting dedication of rights-of-way easements for Blackwood Ridge Phase III, Woodridge Corporate Park Phase III, and Savannah Place Section 4 Phase I. Item number two is the public art recommendation for the Downey Sculpture Exhibit. Item number three is a resolution of issuance of revenue refunding bonds for the Greenville Utilities Commission Combined Enterprise System Revenue Bonds Series 2021A. Item four is a consideration of a lease agreement with E.L. Land LLC. Item number five is a renewal of agreement with Greenville Auto Auction for the sale of surplus vehicles. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the filing of three applications to the United States Department of Homeland Security for the FY 2021 FEMA Building Resistance Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program for Stormwater Capital Projects. Item number seven is a purchase of replacement, a replacement vehicle for the Public Works Department. Item number eight is a contract award to Pitt Country Mart, Inc., to supply gas, diesel fuel, and diesel exhaust fluid, DEF, for regular and emergency use. And item number nine is our various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. Thank you very much. Any changes to the consent agenda? I believe Attorney McGirt?
Yes, Mayor and council, I recommend that item one, the resolution, be revised. It references General Statute 168-374 in the resolution, and that statute has been repealed and the same language is now found in 160D-806. So I ask that council approve that resolution with the amended, the correct statute number.
All right. Anybody else? So are we going to pull item number one then?
We move to pull item one for revision.
Okay.
Actually, I'm just going to ask that we pull. I don't have to vote on that. Okay. And I move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
All right. We'll move on to item number one. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is a resolution accepting dedication of rights-of-way and easements for Blackwood Ridge Phase III, Woodridge Corporate Park Phase III, and Savannah Place Section 4 Phase I. And I believe the city attorney has explained the modification we need to make to that resolution.
Move to approve the item as was recommended by the attorney.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the new business. Item number 10. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a contract award for professional services for rights-of-way and final design on the build grant, and we have Lynn Rayner, Civil Engineer 3 with the city, who is also serving as the project manager for the build grant on the call, as well as Lisa Kirby, Engineering Director. And I'll turn this over to Lynn for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Hope everyone's doing well tonight.
Good evening.
I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right. So as Madam City Manager mentioned, this item is for the contract award for professional services for right-of-way and final design for the city's USDOT build grant. Just as a recap, the projects included in the build grant awarded by USDOT includes three street skate projects and four greenway-sidewalk projects. The map before you shows in orange the three street skate projects along the Fifth Street corridor from West Greenville through the Uptown District to Reed Street, and then the four kind of circumferential green corridors are the greenway-sidewalk projects. There are four of those. The council may recall that when Task Order Number One for Professional Services was awarded back in June of 2020, the services are going to be broken down into three different task orders. The reason for that being that as it makes the most sense as design progresses towards bid advertisement, that more design detail is available to better scope those services as they are needed. And again, as you see here, Task Order Number One for Design and Grant Administration was awarded back in June of 2020. Task Order Number Two is what we'll be talking about tonight, after a brief update on the progress of the project. And then Task Number Three will be coming later this year. So just a brief update, kind of hitting some of the highlights of what has transpired since the award of Task Order Number One last June. We have completed quite a bit of work. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into preparing design and construction contract plans for any project, but in particular, a project the size of and scope of the build grant. We've done a lot of aerial and ground surveys, and just to note here, aerial surveys are not something that we typically undertake. But due to the schedule, the tight schedule timeframe that we're under with this build grant, that was a way to achieve a significant amount of information in a lot less time than ground surveys can provide. And where there were issues with tree canopies, that's where ground surveys were used to fill in with that. You see here, we conducted a lot of significant public outreach. We solicited feedback through newsletters and surveys. Over 1,800 of those were sent out to residents, and several hundred were actually hand-delivered along the Fifth Street corridor. Postcards were sent out notifying residents of a public meeting that was held in mid-November, and robocalls were also utilized to try to get the public involved in that public meeting in November. We also held a public stakeholder committee meeting that was conducted in mid-December. As well, there were, there was quite a bit of printed information relative to the public meeting and the projects that were solicited to a number of places, such as the local community center on Fifth Street, as well as the library and a couple of other places. You can see here some of the other highlights of items that we've completed as part of Task Order Number One: Mapping Subsurface Utilities, looking at traffic data relative to the roundabout that's going to be constructed at the Albemarle and Fifth Street intersection, and also prepared 30% design plans and provided comment on those. I won't go through every item that we've done here, but suffice to say, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that's moving us towards 60% plans that will be submitted later this month. To the topic of the night, Task Order Number Two: Professional Services for Right-of-Way and Final Design. They're kind of broken down into three categories within the scope of services in Task Two. We have surveying, as noted here, and that involves monumentation on the ground for easements and right-of-way, preparation of plaits to facilitate recordation of new deeds, and then legal descriptions that go along with those deeds as well. Right-of-way services that will be provided include valuations of those easements and right-of-way. In instances where they're needed, it will also include full appraisals, as well as negotiations with the individual property owners to achieve a satisfactory negotiation. Then finally, after all of the design is complete, we will have bid phase services, which include advertising, the pre-bid meeting, and any addenda that need to be issued as part of that, as well as bid review and certification after bids are opened. One thing we do want to note here is the, this task order is relative to professional services that will be rendered. There are additional costs associated with direct payments to property owners for the easements and right-of-way that will acquire, as well as legal services that are typically handled through a third-party attorney through the city attorney's office. Those closing costs will all be separate of this task order because they're not directly payable to Kimley Horn and Associates. So with that, we request that council approve the fee for Task Order Number Two and award this contract for right-of-way and final design to Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount shown on the screen. And with that, we'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions? No, no questions?
How many, we've hired Kimley Horn for various things before, right?
Yes, sir.
It's like they did a housing survey for us, and a... Is that the only one?
We've used Kimley Horn in a number of projects, Councilmember Smiley, both engineering and in the case you referenced, and on the housing study that was done in 2017.
Yeah, as far as I know...
If there's no discussion, I'll, if there's no discussion, I'll move to approve the item.
All right. We got a motion.
Second.
I have a quick question.
All right.
I was going to second it, sorry.
There's, there's a second motion by Councilmember Daniels. So, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. Mr. Meyerhofer?
Just, just a quick question. I was, I was going to second it after I asked the question. The summary of project totals, the total 538,200 bucks, that's just property acquisition, and that's just basically coming out of our portion required, our matching portion of the build grant? Is that how that, that's working?
That is coming out of the city's portion of the fund, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I had.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move to the vote? All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
All right. We'll move on to item number 11. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a contract award for the 2021 Street Resurfacing Project and approval of Task Order Number Three for the Construction Engineering and Inspections and Construction Material Testing for an on-call contract. And I'll again call Mr. Rayner, who will have that presentation.
Great. Thank you. So I will share my screen with you once again. Everyone see that? All right. So as Madam Manager mentioned, this is for the contract award for the 2021 Street Resurfacing and Task Order Number Three for CEI services under the city's current on-call contract. So in mid-December, staff received and opened three bids for the 2021 Street Resurfacing Contract. The lowest responsible, responsible bidder was S.T. Wooton Corporation. Staff then negotiated Task Order Number Three under our current on-call contract with SEPI Engineering for CEI and materials testing services. So the proposed work that you see before you on the screen, the first four bullets, the building and resurfacing, subgrade, base repair, ADA ramp upgrades, and pavement markings will all be part of the contract being awarded to S.T. Wooton. And the last two items, inspections and materials testing, will be part of the Task Order Number Three for the current on-call contract with SEPI Engineering. This is a list of streets that are included in this current 2021 Street Resurfacing Contract. Council may recall that this list was shared with you via notes to council late last year. This is a map that shows the various streets that are included in the contract as well. And with that, we request that council award the contract to S.T. Wooton for the resurfacing contract, including a 10% contingency for the amount shown, and also approve Task Order Number Three under the on-call contract with SEPI Engineering for the amount shown.
Any questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 12. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is a contract award for the Construction of Fire Rescue Number One Apparatus Bay Expansion Project, and I'll call on Public Works Director Kevin Mulligan for that presentation. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager. To you being mayor, members of council, as city manager indicated, I am proud of this for the award of the contract for the expansion of three of the five bays that face Fifth Street at Fire Station One. The city and our consultant, Stuart Cooper Newell, completed the design drawings on the addition and bid those documents. So let me share my screen. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
So, yeah. Contract award for the Construction of Fire Rescue Station One, the expansion. Council may recall, we sent this out, also in notes to council in the fall of 2020. This is a rendering of the proposed expansion. Each bay is 15 feet in width, and the center bay will extend approximately 16 feet out from the existing base of the building. And the bays on either side of the center bay will extend approximately 14 feet. Yeah, we completed the design in, in the fall of 2020. We advertised the construction documents in November. Opened them up originally in mid-December, but with only two bids, two bidders. So state law requires that we extend that bid without three bidders. So we extended the bid period, and we did receive three bids on December 29. Muter Construction out of Zebulon, North Carolina is the low bidder with a bid, a base bid of $600,000 for the expansion of Fire Station One. We also included two alternates that we are recommending that council approve. They are providing, excuse me, a new concrete apron on either side of the expansion, and as well as painting the existing structure in the interior of the existing structure in addition to the new structure. That would bring the total cost, maybe total cost from $600,000 to $21,500. Muter Construction, the analysis of Muter Construction, investigated, they're actually doing work right now with Pitt County Schools, about to get underway with the roof displacement at CMX. And also, Muter Construction was $86,000 less than the second low bidder, or about 14% lower. So it's a sizable percentage. The schedule for construction is 150 days to complete from the notice to receipt. Henceforth, that's provided. Our recommendation, staff recommendation to council, approve the award of construction contract for $621,500 to Muter Construction out of Zebulon, North Carolina for the expansion of Fire Station One.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mulligan?
This was for, this was to accommodate a, a larger fire truck, is that right?
That's right.
That is correct.
Fire truck, the trailer truck, that's pictures in the, that slide over there.
Move to approve. Is that the bay that's being extended?
Are there three bays that are being extended, and Middle Bay is, will be the primary bay where this is at.
Okay.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
All right. We usually go do a review of the, the next meeting?
We have, but we've, we've been, am I on mute? No, I'm not. We have been trying to make some adjustments on the agenda, and we have not done the review. I'm happy to review it if you'd like. We didn't add that back to the agenda. I'm happy to review the agenda if you'd like.
Council? Is the council going to weigh in on this?
Let's, let's review it.
Okay. We'll review the agenda.
It's my favorite part of the meeting.
Is it? Okay. So we'll convene the meeting, and at the meeting, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. So the first board we have is Board of Adjustment. That's for Mayor Connolly.
I intend to appoint Ryan Hurdle on Thursday night.
All right. Next board is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'll continue that. I have put out a couple of... We'll see what happens.
All right. Historic Preservation, Councilmember Daniels.
I'm going to continue that. I thought I pointed somebody last time on that, Valerie.
You may have. This is just the regular time when the appointments are up, when the terms are up. So you've got, I think all three folks are eligible: Mr. Justin Edwards, a Mr. Andrew Warhead, and a Mr. Robert Wright.
Okay. So I'm going to point everyone that's eligible back.
All right. Human Relations Council, that's Mayor Protem Glover. She is not here. Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Continue, please.
Police Community Relations Committee, that's a direct appointment. Councilmember Daniels.
I'm going to continue that one.
Okay. And finally, we have the Youth Council, which is assigned to Mayor Protem Glover and Mayor Connolly. That concludes the appointments.
Thank you very much. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Also at the meeting, I'm not on mute, also at the meeting on Thursday, the council will consider the, have, hold the following public hearings: An ordinance to Annex Happy Trail Farms LLC property involving .227 acres located along the western right-of-way, the southwest bypass, and 300 feet south of Statensburg Road. The council will consider, hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by PB Builders LLC to rezone 15.02 acres located on the eastern side of Dickinson Avenue, south of the intersection of Dickinson Avenue and Spring Forest Road from RA 20 to R 6. The council will consider an ordinance, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter IV of the city code, to make six amendments to the zoning ordinance, specifically to add grocery store to the table of uses as a permitted use in the following zones: CN, CD, CDF, CG, CH, MCG, and MCH. The second item is to reduce the separation distance of accessory structures between residential structures and other accessory structures. between residential structures and other accessory structures from 10 feet to 5 feet. The third item is to clarify setback requirements for residential pools by adding, no pool structure, including associated decks and concrete aprons, shall be located nearer than 5 feet from a side or rear property line. The fourth item is to add building supply lumber, materials, sales, plumbing, and other electrical supply excluding outdoor storage as a permitted use in the following zones, IU, PIU, and PI. The fifth item is to reduce the standard for illuminated signs from switching between 60 minutes, once every 60 minutes, to switching every, once every 60 seconds. And the last item is to add building supply lumber and material sales, plumbing, and other electrical supply excluding outdoor storage as a special use in the heavy commercial zoning district. The council will also hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Maurice and Drusilla York to designate the JB Cherry and Company Frank Wilson Office Building located at 106 East Fourth Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel Number 25337 as a local historic landmark. And the final public hearing will be a public hearing and a consideration of a resolution to amend an economic development agreement for Grover Gaming, Inc. And finally, under other items of business, the council will consider the approval of a right-of-way agreement and memorandum of understanding with Metro Fiber LLC. That is the agenda for the January 14th meeting, Mayor.
I have to say that public hearing, item number four, is probably going to be a, the longest sentence or group of sentences I think I've ever seen in a public hearing. So make sure you have some water after you get done.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Thursday night. All right, and no city managers report, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. Briefly, just wanted to express my appreciation to everyone that is involved from administrative staff, support staff, and of course, all the teachers with Pitt County Schools that are dealing with some extraordinary circumstances to provide face-to-face instruction. And I have a kid at a Pitt County school and certainly appreciate all the efforts that they have put forth to allow my child to continue face-to-face education. So I appreciate everyone's work to continue to get that done in extraordinary times. So, thank you so much. I'm all set.
All right, Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
Well, I've been taking copious notes at the bi-weekly, two-hour-long Stormwater Commission meetings and I'd like to go through those to, I'm here with you all in about 30 or 40 minutes. But I'm not going to, so I have no comments.
I will take that as that might be your first comment in several months, so.
Move to deny.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
No comments.
All right, Councilmember Daniels?
No comment.
Which leaves me, to me. First, I want to also wish everyone a Happy New Year. Also, I do want to thank the artist for the street mural. I inadvertently forgot to mention that at our last meeting, so I do want to make sure that I thank them for doing the mural. And then also, I want to remind everybody that the city of Greenville was number one in the country for new relocations, which was pretty awesome. That was great news. It's good to see that Greenville's on the map and people are really looking at us as a place to, to move their businesses, move their families, and just come, become a resident of Greenville. So that's really exciting news for Greenville and all of eastern North Carolina. I think it's important to know that other people, other communities around us are going to continue to benefit from our growth as well. So I'm really excited about that. I also want to remind everybody that commercial air service started up last week, so that's exciting. We're glad to have the American Airlines back. Thankful for Bill Hopper and everything that he did, our, our federal delegation that worked hard to bring those services back to our community. So thank you for that. Also remind everybody about all the great job announcements that we've had, which is going to be really exciting. We're going to continue to see hopefully good news in 2021 coming forward. But it's great to be able to have those jobs offered for so many people in our community and hopefully we'll be welcoming many people in our community too. Also want to remind everyone to make sure you get vaccinated. Right now, the Health Department and Biden are the ones that are vaccinating citizens. I've reached out to our Health Department to see if there's any assistance that the city of Greenville can, can help with. Please, if you are 75 or older right now, you're eligible to be able to get the vaccine. So you can contact either the Health Department or you can contact Biden Medical Center to see if you can get on the list to go ahead and get vaccinated. We want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity and we'll continue to fight to make sure that we have the vaccines so people can get back to normal and we can go about our regular day-to-day activities. And in the meantime, continue to wear masks, practice the three W's. I think that's extremely important. COVID is running rampant right now throughout the entire country. And to be able to stop the spread, you got to continue to follow three W's. It's extremely important. And we will be able to not overload our healthcare system. And with that, that's all I have, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Councilmember Daniels. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Call on the city clerk.
All right, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
All right, thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. Everybody has a good night. We'll see you back here Thursday night at 6:00 PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.